Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of February 23rd, 2016. Members present are Diana Rio.
Here.
Hibeto Gonzalez.
Here.
Myself, Joe Paz, Chairman. Also present, excuse, are Eugenio Gonzalez and member Alberto Lurillo, are both excused. Also present is Juan Pena, Planning and Zoning Director, and Jose Villalobos, City Attorney. Okay?
Good evening. First order of business on your agenda from all businesses is the approval of the minutes from December 22nd, 2015.
Okay. Because Hibeto Gonzalez was excused at particular meeting. So it's just you and myself?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second that motion. On the motion, Diana Rio?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Hibeto Gonzalez?
I...
You weren't here, but you're gonna approve.
You weren't here.
I wasn't.
But you can...
I approve.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm afraid that you would have to wait until next meeting because you only have two and the next member was not present at the last meeting.
Oh, to approve the minutes?
Uh, right. So you cannot approve the minutes with three members. You have, you need quorum.
All right. Then we'll, um, we'll take that up on the next meeting then.
On the March meeting.
On the March meeting. Next item?
Uh, next item is new business, public hearing, agenda item number one. Property address is 6246 Southwest 8th Street, VKD Inc., Cafe de Arte Corporation. Applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow cafeteria/restaurant use in the commercial building provided for storage and administrative office.
The, whichever one is gonna talk on behalf of the business?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. I'm Dario Mazzai. I am the owner of VKD Corporation.
Can you state your address too, please?
Yes. My address is 6254 Southwest 8th Street. My address, my company address.
Okay.
But the property address is 6246 Southwest 8th Street. Is one of the unit at the shopping center Plaza Romana, Piazza Romana.
Okay.
Okay. Well, my tenant is applying for the variance as he used as cafeteria, a restaurant that was already in place, but for the bad management of the prior tenant without my knowledge. It happened that the, the occupational license was denied.
Revoked.
Revoked. Was revoked. So, uh, the place has been emptied and then I rented to a new tenant that, you know, is um, he has the interest in doing a cafeteria/restaurant and knowing what the other tenant was wrongly doing. It mostly was a bar, in effect. So, the idea is to open from eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning and close at 11 o'clock, max 12 o'clock, as all the cafeteria/restaurant and none further, you know, behind the 12 o'clock in the night. So, he has a menu that he showed me before, you know, I give him the promise of the lease after you decide about this to reinstate that cafeteria/restaurant and he has a menu, he presented menu. I don't know if you have in front of you the menu?
Um, no, I don't believe we do. Yeah, it's part of your package. Is it? There's a menu in there in the... After the application. Is it there? No, we got a site plan of the tables and stage, but no menu, but...
Well, there is a menu.
You can continue.
So, the idea is just that I am renting to the gentleman because he has a other activity and he has an advertising company. Well, he will, uh, will tell you about his background and is a more reliable person to do this kind of business than the other person that was before. So, it's almost ten years, has been ten or more, maybe fifteen, fourteen years as cafeteria/restaurant. The bad luck that this later tenant act in a...
I'm sorry.
In a wrongly way.
Okay. They, why, what was the reason why the previous occupational license was revoked or suspended?
The previous license was revoked because the previous owner of the business, not of the...
No me.
Not of the building, of the business. Was selling hard liquor and there was also illicit, uh, drugs being sold in the establishment.
Okay. But for the record, neither the applicant nor the owner of the property were involved in any of that?
No, they were not.
Okay. And I see the site plan includes a, um, stage for entertainment. Can yourself or your applicant briefly describe what the intent, uh, I see it has a stage?
Yeah.
Is this like a...
The stage, I don't know if he will take it out. He didn't do anything because he already spent a lot of money to do this, this variant.
Right, but I, my...
So, the stage maybe will go, I don't know, no idea.
My question is, like, is this gonna have live entertainment?
I don't think so, because we'll, I don't think so. No, no, no. Luis, Mr. Luis. The stage is there, is in the picture?
Anything in Spanish, please?
Uh, yes.
You have, sir, you can, you go with it, sir. You cannot talk from there, you have to go to the podium.
Yeah. See, I don't know, really. The stage was there because the person that was before was doing a live entertainment. You know, it was a restaurant cafeteria with live entertainment. The things that the, the prior tenant passed the ordinance. Nobody realizes. Me, I am not working full-time because I had the surgery two years ago, so I am not anymore in the shopping center all the time. That is a shopping center, has like fifteen space between office, no, more than fifteen, sixteen sp- uh, nineteen, see, ten store and nine, uh, offices. So, I couldn't, and anyway, in the night, I was at home. So, I didn't know what was going on over there. Really, we should have known, would have been the police of West Miami, because if something like that happened, didn't happen overnight. Happened because little by little, this person, we're talking about always the pioneer, build up a clientele that stay late in the night, like they told me, until three, four o'clock in the morning. They couldn't do it. See, by the ordinance, I think he should have closed around twelve, one o'clock. So, the police should have done a report. If I had the report from the police for an, for something, you know, that was going on, non in the ordinance of the City of West Miami, I would have properly, you know, attacked the tenant with my lawyer and, you know, a...
Okay.
But it didn't happen. So now, we are in a situation where the store is closed, this gentleman want to reopen.
Okay, we, we understand that. If the gentleman can come up and, uh, I'm just curious, and I'm sure the board is, to know what his, uh, business model is. Is it a restaurant, nightclub?
No, no nightclub, because I, and I specifically will, will write in the lease. No nightclub, but no business after 12 o'clock, uh, with the ordinance that Mr. Pena explained to me and give to you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, you're welcome, uh, señor. Mr. Pena, can you translate for the record?
Okay. Uh, mi nombre es Luis Verona.
Su dirección?
Mi dirección es 16504 Southwest, 59 Terrace, Miami, Florida, 33193.
Uh, sir, let me, uh, let me stop you there. He has to translate what you're saying, so will you speak softly and a little bit louder?
Slower, slower. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, como decía, mi dirección es 16504 Southwest, 59 Terrace.
My address is 16504 Southwest?
Miami, Florida, 33193.
Que calle?
59 Terrace.
Fifty-nine terraces, Miami, Florida.
Okay. Uh, el objetivo de operar este local es como una cafeteria/restaurant.
The objective is to operate the business as cafeteria/restaurant.
Bajo la ordenanza de la Ciudad de West Miami.
Under the City of West Miami's ordinances.
Ese es el objetivo principal de operar este local.
This is the principal object, uh, uh, objective to operate the, the business.
Tiene alguna pregunta?
Any questions you have as far as...
Okay, I have a question. Two COP licenses, that for beer and wine or for...
Two COP is beer/wine consumption on premises.
Okay.
Only served with meals.
Just beer and wine?
That's correct.
Okay. I thought it was hard liquor.
Señor Verona, usted va a aplicar por la licencia de alcohol y, uh, de cerveza y vino? Es correcto.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. Pena, can I clarify? Uh, the work that is here now, was that permitted? Or a portion of it, was it permitted? My, the basis of my question is, was this approved already for like life safety and...
That would have to go again through life safety inspection once the, once the occupation is applied for.
But all that I'm looking at here is what is there now?
That's what exists, existing.
Okay. Would having live entertainment, a stage, whether this size or whatever other size, would that require a different license from the city?
No.
No. So he could have it, if this gets approved, he could have live entertainment there, as long as it's indoors, not spilling out to the outside?
That's correct, as long as, uh, if it's approved.
If it's approved, right.
And he's got to provide a detailed map of the layout and interior space by the registered engineer or architect?
Correct. The floor plan registered by a registered architect or engineer. That, that is very difficult to determine, the size of the space and the location of chairs and, and other objects that are part of the, you can't just jam eleven tables in there if they don't fit.
Right.
Because every, 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 every table and chair requires a certain amount of space.
But you don't have that right now, right?
No, that, that's just what was in the business at the time.
Right.
That will have to go through the, again, once we apply, then, once, uh, he's approved for the use, then he has to apply with Miami-Dade County Fire Department for an inspection from them and they determine the space, uh, what, what a lot of space could be used for capacity.
Does he need a minimum amount of seats to have the two COP license?
No, there is no minimum.
There's no minimum? So he could have...
The only requirement is that you must sell meal with it.
Okay. And how many seats are there now?
Uh, señor Verona, ¿cuántos sí hay en el...? Cuarenta y nueve es lo que está...
Forty-nine is what's in the business now.
But not, not necessarily what the fire department's allowing?
We don't know that until...
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? And, uh, well, I'm reading, uh, the recommendations by city staff.
These are, uh, these recommendations come from, again, the previous tenant that was operating the business, not like it should have been. So that's what, uh, why we, uh, have added the, the outdoor, the patrons not hanging around the parking lot. It does back up to residential neighborhood, so...
Does the, the parking lot must have required outdoor lighting per city ordinance? It does not have...
It does, we just have to measure it to make sure it meets the requirements.
And Mr. Pena, out of curiosity, I guess it has no bearing on this, um, this case, but is that parking lot in the rear owned by the city?
No, it's owned by the, the app, the, the owner, K, VKD.
Wasn't there one there that was owned by the city at one, one time?
A portion of that parking lot was owned by the city years ago and the city sold it off and they built duplex.
Okay. Uh, I knew there was something like that and that's why I asked, okay. All right, any, uh, further questions from the board, comments?
The second floor is occupied by offices.
They're all offices.
So the variance here is for the use?
For the use, the special use.
Okay.
Anything that has to do with restaurants, automobile shops, they're not automatic permitted uses, they have to come before the board.
Okay.
It is a public hearing, so you do have to open it.
Oh, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing now. If any members from the audience wish to, um, speak on behalf of this item, one way or another, uh, you may approach the podium.
For the record, we sent out notices to 500 radius feet around the property.
Okay. I gather nobody wishes to speak on behalf of this matter from the audience, so I can close the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. And, um, well, it's a restaurant, right?
Correct.
That's what it is? We got plenty of restaurants, um, here in the city.
The other, the other part of the application is the signage that is on the card. That's that window screening that, uh, we no longer allow?
Right. Right, okay.
So I need an up and down on that.
Okay, but that's not a public hearing, though.
That's part of the application.
Okay.
If they submit it with the application, it's part of the application.
All right, any...
No, it's, uh, that's your recommendation at the bottom, right?
That's correct.
Anybody wish to make a motion?
This, uh, sorry, before we make a motion, I have another question.
Okay.
So, these are, what I'm looking at here is...
What's this?
It's an obscuring of the existing glass...
Correct.
La, la, señor Verona.
It's, it's an entire...
La área negra que enseña en la foto ese, es, se ve, no se ve para dentro pero se ve para fuera. Sí, es un cristal, es un cristal ahumado. Es un cristal ahumado o es un screen que se lo pone cristal? Ah, como screen, sí.
It's a screen that's placed on the glass.
I, although it's, you know, it's beautiful images, I would not be looking at that favorably. I would like to just see the name of the place and if there's enough space, then, you know, the little, I guess these are the logos of the, of the business, but remove any of the, all, all of the black screens, all of these images, um, just leave the logos, if there's enough space, and the name with individual letters.
Okay, so in other words, to be able to see inside the establishment from the exterior?
Yeah, we don't allow the, the whole glass screened in like it, the...
La junta está indicando que ellos no permiten, es, eh, tapar el cristal completo, que si quiere poner los logos, lo puede poner, pero no tapar el cristal completo. Not a problem.
Okay, you wanna state that in the form of a motion with other possible conditions?
Well, we could probably, you, I mean, if we follow the same, um, considerations and recommendations by the, by, uh, the Planning and Zoning Department, we can probably just make a motion to follow these, uh, recommendations.
Okay.
Because it's withdrawing the proposed window screening for the storefront.
So you wanna go ahead and make the motion, then?
Yeah, I make the motion to go ahead and, uh...
Are you making the motion, pardon me, Mr. Chair? Are you making the motion with the recommendation of, by, uh...
By staff.
Yes.
Okay. Are they listed in the...
As listed in the, in the...
Okay.
Okay, we don't have to read those for the record or state them for the record?
I would read it for the record, sir, since we're making a record for this.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, you wanna read that for the record? Well, go ahead.
May I add, eh, or throw out there to add another condition that states that no music or entertainment to, to be on the exterior, not in the parking lot, not in the front?
Yes, very much so.
Okay, I would like to add that.
No exterior music?
Right.
Okay, that's already listed, though, right? No music or loud conversations in the parking lot?
Right, music or entertainment, I would like to add, because if they have, you know, a guitar player, although great, but, you know, I would, I would like to keep that inside the venue, not outside.
No habrá ningún tipo de música afuera ni nada, así que no ese por ejemplo.
Okay. We have, we have to understand, and of course the applicant has to understand, that this particular place was closed for some violation of precisely the code that we're talking about.
Correct.
That, uh, this is, of course, uh, it would be very strictly enforced.
Que el abogado le está explicando que es lo tanto de, eh, puntuando todas las condiciones porque como el lugar fue cerrado por otro, eh, inclino que no, no siguió las regulaciones y, y mayormente estarán las violaciones que estaba haciendo constantemente en el parqueo. Yo entiendo perfectamente.
I understand. Okay. So the applicant will be on notice that, uh, that will be very, very forcefully enforced and first because of what, uh, the history that we have in that particular place. Okay. Mr. Gonzalez, would you care to proceed with your motion?
I make a motion to, uh, pass the, this, um...
Recommendation for approval.
Recommendation for approval with the following conditions: that we maintain all patrons inside the property with no outdoor consumption of alcohol, no loitering in or around the parking lot areas, no music or loud conversations in the parking lots, parking lot must have required outdoor lighting per city ordinance, owner to provide a detailed map of layout of the interior space by a registered engineer or architect, and provide maximum occupancy not to exceed the allowed by the Miami-Dade Fire Department, restrict the entertainment hours, and lastly, withdraw the proposed window screening for, for the storefront.
El loya, que ya usted lo tiene, del interior del, del local. Sí, pero tiene, eh, lo que le está indicando el, el miembro de la junta es que tiene que ser por un arquitecto, un ingeniero que, eh, coger el patio y determine cuánto cabe ahí adentro legalmente. También he entendido que los bomberos tienen esa estipulación, por eso es que la...
Por eso.
A la hora que usted aplique, que se la pruebe el uso, usted va y aplica con el condado y ellos le dicen cuántas personas pueden tener dentro de él.
Right, okay.
And one more condition I'd like to, what?
Go right ahead.
What, Diana?
There was no music, the, no music and entertainment?
No exterior entertainment.
No music or entertainment on the rear or the front of the property? Second.
Okay, I would second that motion. Uh, on the motion, Diana Rio?
Yes.
Hibeto Gonzalez?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ahora el segundo, uh, audiencia es en marzo, frente a la Comisión de la Ciudad.
Right.
March 17th, before the city commission.
Next item on your agenda is variance hearing, agenda item number two. Property address 6291 Southwest 16 Terrace, Alexander Delgado and Nadia Valdez.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, sir.
Applicant is requesting a variance to continue the existing rear building line of the house to the new addition presently at 11 feet, three inches, where the 15 feet setback is required by ordinance. The property has 7,200 square feet and the applicant is requesting a variance for the addition. Uh, just to give you a little bit of story, uh, as far as the, what occurred on this property, in my memorandum, the property back in 1970, uh, was, uh, permitted to, to have an outdoor screened area porch. And at some point in the 1970s, they also requested a permit to enclose the, that area with, um, jealousy windows and block, CBS block wall. Subsequent to that in 75, that was upgraded and another addition was added to the property for an outdoor terrace, uh, just east of the addition. Uh, the outdoor terrace was left at the setback 15 feet and from what I gathered, uh, it was in very poor condition, so they have tore it down and now they would like to put the, that was also enclosed at a subsequent, uh, time, so they had like a jot in the rear building line. They have since knocked down the, the terrace that was erected in 75 and they are planning to do a floor-to-room addition to the back of the house, which you have the plans for, but they would like to continue the building line of the first addition.
Which was the 11-foot-three setback?
Yes.
And then, is there a new setback on the right, an eight-foot?
Say that again?
Is the, on the, along the right side of the property line, is that eight-foot new side setback? Is that in, what's the setback on the, on the right?
On that side, it's, uh, uh, seven and a half feet or...
Ten percent.
Or 10% of the lot.
Okay.
Okay, so eight, eight feet would not be any variance or... No, there's no variance. It's just the rear building line.
Okay.
And then the, the family room, just to be clear on the plan submitted by the applicant, what they designated the family room, that's what was originally approved with the 11-3 setback?
Correct.
Correct? So then it'll be the two new bedrooms and bathroom?
That's, that's gonna be at 11-3, that they wish to continue at 11-3. Your name and address for...
Yes, my name is Rafael Padilla.
You can lower it.
Rafael Padilla, I'm the architect of records for the project and represent the owner. And, uh, he just told you the whole story much better than I could because I didn't know the story of the, uh, the building.
Well, I dug up the old property file, that's what I gathered from the timeline that I saw that they did.
I understand and appreciate that. Now, uh, in reality, I have a young family, uh, they're growing, they have children and they have no space. And they wish to, to have another bedroom with a bathroom and a closet, that's everybody else in life. Now, uh, we have tried to just keep what we've been approved by the city, as he certainly did indicate, and I don't have much things to say, just, uh...
Again, we notify 500 radius feet around the property of this variance hearing tonight.
Okay, are your clients present in the...
I, I'm the architect of records.
But your clients are present, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the gentleman back there?
That's the owner.
Okay.
State your name and address for the record, sir.
Jeff, you wanna...
He's a new property owner, he just bought the property.
Okay, we like to meet our new neighbors, so if you can say your name and address for the record?
Alexander Delgado and my address is 6291 Southwest 16 Terrace. My wife wouldn't be here tonight, but she's with the little girls.
We understand. Okay, um, does anybody from the audience wish to speak on this item?
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Oh, okay, there you go.
Seeing a younger family all the time?
And again, all the residents in the 500-feet radius?
Yes, sir.
What radius were not... And again, all the residents in the 500-feet radius, foot radius were notified. Any comments from the board?
Yo, do you have to open it up, or are we...
No, this is not a public hearing, all right?
No, okay.
It's just a variance.
Okay.
Notifications made by mailing to 500 feet.
Make a motion to approve?
I second.
Okay, on the motion, Diana Rio?
Yes.
Ybeto Gonzalez?
Yes.
I vote yes, it's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And your plans, I believe, are almost approved, so call me tomorrow, and I'll let you know where the status of the plans are. Next item on your agenda is variance hearing, agenda item number three, property address 5990 Southwest 16th Street. Isael Hernandez, applicant is requesting a variance to legalize an existing accessory aluminum roof structure, 29 feet by 14 feet, with an exterior side setback of five feet or 15 feet setback as required by ordinance. The property has 7,050 square feet, and the applicant is requesting to keep the existing aluminum structure on the exterior side setback for recreational purposes. Your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Isael Hernandez, I live in 5990 Southwest 16th Street.
Okay, thank you. And this was, Mr. Pena, was installed without a permit? Yes. So this is an after-the-fact? And that's a six-inches setback from the... The present columns are six inches off the property. And we would require 15 feet? That's correct. Wow, okay. And... You have drawings there that show moving the columns inward in order to achieve the five-foot setback that they're requesting. The structure is too big to support, a cantilevered off the wall of the house, so it has to have some column somewhere, or it has to be removed, one or two.
Correct.
Again, we notified 500 radius feet around the property. Okay.
Do you have a picture of what this looks like right now?
It's that white spot. As you know, the yellow box is supposed to be out here on the property line. It's just shifted.
It's this area here?
Right.
No, the white, the white.
Ooh.
Yeah, the property line is actually out here, it's just that when you go to the county website, it's off.
You don't have a picture of the facade of what, is there a fence in here? I mean, it looks like there's a fence in the survey, but...
You have a fence there, correct?
Yeah, I would have a fence.
A chain link fence?
No, a wood fence.
Wood fence.
And that, Mr. Pena, just out of curiosity, that wood fence would not be allowed today, correct? That's correct. If they had to replace it, they would have to go with an ornamental... Correct. An ornamental tight fence. Okay. And, Mr. Pena, no matter what size awning or canopy roof, it still has to maintain the 15 feet from the side property line. The supporting columns, yes. The supporting columns, so it could be freeze, attached to the wall... Say you want to put a five-foot or a 10-foot aluminum in a cantilever situation, you could. As long as it meets the wind loads and is designed by an engineer and inspected by the city Building Department.
My concern on this one is that it faces the street.
I have, I share the same concern as well.
And I wish I could see a little bit more to make a determination, maybe they could replace the fence, or maybe, you know, like I feel like I don't have enough information to make a determination.
You're, they're in violation of the code, right? At present time, yes.
Yes.
So we couldn't go... The way I see things, unfortunately, they are in violation of the existing code. It's unfortunate that it was installed without having at least approached the city to find out what can be built there, and I really don't see a hardship in this case, and we have to respect the zoning code, because that could set a precedence then for additional, a lot of other homeowners are going to want the same thing, and it defeats the aesthetic purposes of our code. So I'm really leaning in favor of not approving this as it stands right now or as it is presented to us.
I have to agree with that. What would be the setback on the other side? If they were to flip it to the other side, where it's the, I guess, I don't know, the interior side of the property?
Again, it's seven and a half feet.
It's seven and a half feet.
Or 10% of the lot.
But it's not visible from the street, or is visible from the street? If they were to flip it to this side?
Not a good picture, but that's...
I was looking for it right now.
Oh, you want to Google?
Okay.
That's what Google has, that's the roof structure.
Which is this right here?
Right.
And then that's the starting of the wood fence.
That's the wood fence, correct.
So it's metal up to a point, and then it turns into a wood fence?
That's right. Picket in the front, and then it turns into a wood fence.
And then, as you stated, Mr. Pena, if it's seven and a half feet freeze, or cantilevered, with no security columns, that would be allowed?
It's five feet away the fence, the fence, you know?
Say that again?
It's five feet away the fence.
Yes.
The columns are five feet from the fence.
Also, you already moved the columns.
We haven't done anything.
No, because we have to...
Go ahead.
Then what we put in the plans is what we're, you know, if we can do, what they can do.
I'm sorry?
You on the side, so I can see the side of the street.
That's great, I don't know who's on that one.
We're Googling it.
We're looking at the picture, and it is highly visible from the street, actually both corners.
Yeah.
And again, the intent of the code as it was written was to specifically prevent a structure like that, because they are deemed to be not aesthetically pleasing.
I don't think, I don't think it's, the code violation is that, it's just that the violation is that you have a structure within the setback, right?
Correct.
So it's not...
That's, that's true.
I mean, because he could have a, an engineered overhanging structure that's attached to the wall.
Correct.
And that would be within the code.
Yeah, because we don't have a limit on the size of an overhang.
Right. So it's just the, the columns are within the setback on a fixed structure.
Okay, I guess if your engineer could come back perhaps and maybe redesign it, reinforce it, where the columns would not be, what would be, Mr. Pena, an acceptable distance, again, the columns from the side, from the property line? No, for columns, you need 15 feet. 15 feet, so you can't have any columns at all. Okay? And I believe they looked at cantilevered, and it's too big of a structure for that. Correct? That's been determined already.
No. It's too big.
It's too big.
Yeah.
Okay, then... Well, any...
No, we have to go by what the code is.
No.
Okay, any...
You've got to open the public hearing.
No, this is not a public hearing, correct?
It's a variance hearing, but they're here as neighbors, I believe.
Okay. Well, any motion?
No, I, I make a motion not to approve, because it would be in violation of the code.
I second.
Madam, you have to go onto the podium, please. Identify yourself.
My name's Alicia Alonso. I'm at 5949 Southwest 16 Terrace, and I've been in the city since 1964. I'm going to be 58 this year. I came to the city when I was five, and I go by there when I walk, and I hear their children laughing back there, and it's the best feeling. They pull up, made a mistake, but can you leave it up for them? I mean, it's great to hear the kids back there, they're protected from the sun, they're in a safety zone.
I...
For the kids.
I understand that, but we have to go by what the code...
And they're great neighbors.
No, I understand, and...
And I live five houses from...
Mr. Chair, is there a motion on the table?
Right, there is a motion. We understand that, ma'am, but there is a motion, and I thought I heard a second.
I second that.
And I, there is a motion and a second. On the motion, Ms. Rio?
Yes.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, yes to deny.
Right. And I vote yes as well.
To deny.
To deny. We're sorry, but that is what...
Thank you.
The zoning code is, perhaps if you could redesign something a little smaller and that'll provide shade to your children, and submit it to Mr. Pena. Always discuss any proposed improvements that you wish to do on your property. It's always a good idea to touch base with the city staff to make sure what is and isn't allowed, and whether or not any permits are required. But perhaps maybe you can downsize it, and maybe a little smaller, and it'll still provide the shade that I know is so important.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That would be the last item on your agenda tonight, sir. Okay, the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of February 23, 2016 is now adjourned. It is 8:20 PM for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
The problem with that is you approved one, and then everybody else that lives on a corner like Ybeto want one. Oh, you got that tree there, I can't see it. I'm going to have to Google your property.
If it was not facing the street, you know, it's...
I don't understand, I don't understand how people, how people today, today and age, still do things like that.